Roll call please.
Yes. Mr. Shi.
Here.
Mr. Vishal Patel. Ms. Peng.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Mr. Armano.
Here.
Ms. Anjana Patel.
Here.
Mr. Lugo.
Here.
Mr. Ronak Patel.
Here.
Mr. Erica.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Opening statement?
Yes. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Law in 1975, C-231 Sunshine Law, the Edison Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education Administrative Offices and posted on the Board's website.
Thank you. Today we have the meeting at the Woodrow Wilson Middle School. And, Mrs. Blevins, this is your home, so you take it over.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Alderelli, members of the Board of Education, students, parents, and community members. I'm Jennifer Blevins, the proud principal of Woodrow Wilson Middle School, and it's a pleasure to welcome you this evening. Welcome to our beautiful new gymnasium. We are so excited to host this evening's Board of Education meeting in this incredible space, a space that represents our continued commitment to excellence and growth at Woodrow Wilson Middle School. To showcase some of our WWMS students and programs, I will now introduce you to our Assistant Principal, Mrs. Rinu Menderata.
Thank you, Mrs. Blevins. Good evening, Dr. Alderelli, Mr. Shi, members of the Board of Education, families, and most importantly, our students. It is truly my honor to stand here before you tonight and share just a glimpse of what makes Woodrow so remarkable. Our students are not only mastering academics, they are growing into leaders, creators, and change-makers. Tonight, I am proud to highlight two programs that have been nationally recognized by Character.org as promising practices, and they reflect the very heart of Woodrow. The first program is our STARS program, Students and Teachers Achieving Results and Success. Through STARS, students are paired with a teacher mentor, creating a true one-to-one connection. Over thirty-two of our teachers generously volunteer their own time each week to provide guidance and build relationship with students who need them. The impact is clear: stronger connections, greater confidence, higher achievement, and a school culture where every student feels valued. We owe this program's success to our incredible teachers and counselors. Without their dedication, STARS simply wouldn't exist. Another program that embodies the heart of Woodrow is our student-run coffee shop. Operated by our unified self-contained program alongside peer partners, it is far more than a place to just grab coffee. Here, students practice communication, responsibility, financial literacy, and teamwork. It is entirely student-driven and self-sustaining, and has become the hub for connection for our entire school community. And just like STARS, this program also has earned national recognition as a promising practice. We are deeply grateful to our teachers, Mr. Makya Varna, Ms. Banik, our para-professionals and CSTs who make this program happen. And just to let you know, at the center of all we do here at Woodrow is our North Star Statement, empowering learners to shape the world with knowledge, purpose, and passion. Programs like STARS and the coffee shop bring this vision to life, and our North Star guides everything we do here. So of course, our students also shine through the arts. Tonight, we are proud to present the Woodrow Wilson Top Jazz Band under the direction of Mr. Sal Fossa. They will perform Jericho, an Afro-American spiritual arranged by Chris Sharp in the style of 1930 swing, echoing the timeless energy of "Sing, Sing, Sing." So please enjoy Jericho. Wow, what a wonderful performance. Thank you, Mr. Fossa and the students, for that outstanding performance. I want to share a special point of pride. Both of our band directors here at Woodrow, Sal and Sergio Fossa, once sat in the very seats here as Woodrow and JP students. And today, they have returned as educators, giving back the same community that shaped them. So I would now like to invite Mr. Sal Fossa to say a few words.
Thank you very much, and thank you for allowing us to perform for you this evening. We're so grateful to be here. I personally am very grateful and blessed to be in the position I am. As you know, I was raised in town, and I went through all twelve years of the music program here. And what I can say is, from being firsthand witness, experiencing the program myself, and working here the last twenty-six years, this town has been on a relentless and ruthless accelerating upwards trajectory when it comes to education and also, obviously, the arts. Because every time you find an educationally achieving district, the arts are always front and center also, and they do not get left behind. The change that we've seen in the last few years has been very difficult to describe to you. We went from a schedule where we could see the kids every other day to half a year, and now it's every day in the classroom. We're so excited to...I'll just report a quick report on Woodrow Wilson. We now have, rather than split by grade levels, we have an audition-only wind ensemble, where the top sixty kids are selected through audition process, which is just kind of unheard of. We played for Ithaca College last year, and each one of the students studied with the professors on each of those individual instruments on their faculty. And then the head of bands at Ithaca said that he would like to come down and work with our wind ensemble because he was so impressed with how we're playing. And this is only to complement the support that we've had from parents, in-house administration, and the Board of Ed, and the administration in Edison. So we only owe all of this to you folks. We thank you very much for that, and really hope that you continue the support of such an excellent program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fossa. Now, speaking of student talent and leadership, I would like to highlight just another group that continues to make us proud, our Future Business Leaders of America, FPLA. I have had the privilege of traveling with them to the National Leadership Conference in California, and I can tell you that they truly represent the very best of Woodrow. So please join me in welcoming two of our outstanding FPLA leaders, Artem Jawariwala and Rayan Shbodhu, who will share their experiences with us.
Hello, ward members. My name is Rayan Shbodhu.
And my name is Artem Jawariwala. And we are two proud eighth graders from Woodrow Wilson Middle School. I hope everyone's evening is going well so far.
Today, we are here to talk about something that we and Woodrow Wilson Middle School are very proud of, our very own FPLA program. The truth is, although many in the room here today do lead successful lives, most of them didn't really get the chance to participate in business-related competitions at such a young age, where they would have to pave their own path to the top. Luckily, we as students did get that chance. FPLA is a business-related club where students have the opportunity to, you know, show off their skills at competitions, and they even have a shot at making it to the National Leadership Conference.
Rayan, would you like to start off by talking a little bit about your journey in FPLA?
Sure, Artem, I would love to. So I started my journey in FPLA when I was in sixth grade, and ever since then, I've been a part of FPLA and all the wonderful memories that were created in it. Unfortunately, I didn't make it to Nationals in sixth grade, although I placed in top ten in states. But I did not stop there. I did not give up. In seventh grade, I worked my way through states, and I got first place in the whole nation for my category at Anaheim, California. Artem, I remember you made it to Nationals in sixth grade, right? I believe it was in Orlando. Do you want to talk about that?
Of course. So I got to FPLA, or Future Business Leaders of America, after joining my new school, Woodrow Wilson. And something about Woodrow Wilson is, there are a lot of clubs. But as a business enthusiast myself, I chose to join FPLA. At the FPLA NLC in sixth grade, located in Orlando, Florida, I learned valuable skills, like responsibility, by managing a room with three other students, as well as managing expenses, by buying groceries in a budget. We also engaged in networking through PIN trading, making friends from different states and even different countries. I also improved my public speaking skills by speaking at workshops, another opportunity FPLA provides. Truth be told, FPLA was more than just skills. It was also filled with many fun events, ranging from trips at the amusement parks like Universal and Disney, to even the days just trading PINs at the convention center. It was truly a blast and a memory I will never forget.
Like you said, Artem, FPLA is not just about learning business concepts all the time, or about solving rigorous math problems. It's about learning discipline, time management, and improving skill sets relating to public speaking and confidence. And most importantly, it's about having fun and networking with people.
This is what makes FPLA and the trips included in it so special. Woodrow Wilson's FPLA program has truly represented the state of New Jersey in an outstanding way at Nationals. Forty-four students from Woodrow Wilson represent the school at the conference, competing in a range of events. Around half of the competitors stepping up from Woodrow placed, with twenty students placing in the top ten, five students receiving second place, one of which was myself, and two students placing in first, one of which was Rayan. Those are certainly some pretty good numbers if I've ever seen any.
Trips like these are really what gives students the opportunity to express themselves, and this is what makes Edison schools really stand out, and it's what differentiates us from the rest of the nation. So, on behalf of Woodrow Wilson Middle School and all the students who participated in FPLA, I would like to thank the Board of Education for supporting FPLA, and I would also like to thank the club advisors and the teachers who were with us on that trip to Nationals, Ms. Menderata, Ms. Cameron, and Ms. Islam. They truly deserve an appreciation for the amount of effort they put into the club. From having fun in Disneyland to competing in our category, they were there with us every step of the way, and they were really what made Nationals such a huge success. So coming from someone who's been on the trip, I think it would be wonderful if the Board of Education could continue to support FPLA and support such trips like this.
FPLA has truly changed me as a person, and it is something I plan to continue this year and in college and high school as well. In a world where we have to deal with major financial decisions, like buying a home, going to college, or even something as simple as staying out of debt, I am beyond grateful to have been part of FPLA, allowing me to be more financially literate.
I just want to end with my quote, "A small drop in the ocean can make a big difference in the world." I'm just a drop in the ocean, and if more people come together, we can make a huge difference.
Thank you for giving Rayan and I this opportunity to shine a light on Woodrow Wilson's FPLA program. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Artem and Rayan, and congratulations once again to all of our FPLA members. Now, on behalf of our staff and students, I would like to thank the Board for their time and continued support. We are proud of who we are, and even more excited of what's ahead. Woodrow Wilson is truly a special place for us. Thank you.
All right, so, thank you, the students. You guys did a great job over there for the presentation, FPLA. And I hope you know, when you actually go to high school next year, there will be a business academy waiting for you. All right? We're going to start a business academy next year, and you will continue to shine, you know, in the areas that you guys have put a lot of effort in. And I'd like to thank the band director for what you said here. We can see the difference that the commitment that the district made to the music program, and these two students, you know, they're not only scholars, and they're musicians as well. These, they go hand to hand. And I'm really happy that you mentioned that with the new change of schedule, you're meeting these kids every day. That is a big thing that we were able to accomplish a couple of years ago, and it's paying off. And we all know that JP Stevens has a high-performing band program, and so is our Edison High School, and I see the feeding program that goes into our high schools. Thank you very much, and thank you for all the hard work. Thank you. All right, now we have a couple presentations, Dr. Alderelli.
Thank you very much, Board President Shi. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Eddie Alderelli, Superintendent of Schools here in Edison Township. It is my great privilege tonight to introduce and celebrate someone who embodies the very best of the teaching profession. Each year, Middlesex County honors one educator out of all of the schools in Middlesex County that demonstrates outstanding dedication, creativity, and impact in the classroom. This year, we are so proud and honored to house the Middlesex County Teacher of the Year, our very own Ms. Pamela Eng of Lincoln Elementary School. Just listening to the way her students, her colleagues, and her administrators talk about her, she's the kind of teacher every parent hopes their child will have. She inspires curiosity, builds confidence, and nurtures a love of learning, which is what we all hope for. Pamela, we are thrilled to recognize your remarkable accomplishments and the way you make Lincoln Elementary in our district shine. Please join me in congratulating Pamela. What a wonderful accolade. And we do have an awesome video to show you right now that honors Pamela and all of her accomplishments. I'm here, I'm here, I'm here. Well, folks, first of all, we have a really exciting piece. I'm Dr. Alderelli. Like the scooper said, I'm in charge of all of these schools. It's my pleasure to come in here and do really cool things like this and to celebrate really awesome things. So I'm actually, Mr. Anderson, with my saying a few words and explaining maybe why you're right here. We're here for like a really cool celebratory thesis about one of the people that are currently in this room right now. So without any further hesitation, I'm going to introduce to you the County Superintendent who oversees all of the school districts in Middlesex County. So how about a round of applause for Mr. Anderson? The County Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Eng!
Thank you. Hi, boys and girls. Don't want to be up here. I teach for you guys. You're the future, so you're going to be in charge of changing the world, and this is my part, my contribution, of making sure that the world's going to move in another direction. And I have a fantastic team who helps me all move back, who listens to my complaints and the stress, and cheer me along. But I teach for the kids. I'm very proud of them all.
I have the privilege and honor today of spending a little bit of time with a third-grade teacher at Lincoln Elementary School, Ms. Pamela Eng, and also Middlesex County Teacher of the Year. So congratulations. Thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you for having me.
Oh, absolutely.
It's exciting. Thank you very much. This is very exciting.
I've read all about you, and all I could say is, it's richly deserved.
Thank you so much. It's such an honor to be working here in New Jersey, and it's a wonderful, wonderful thing.
Great. I wish you a fabulous school year, and again, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
So, at this time, I'd like to call to the podium, up to the front of the stage, Mr. Shi. I believe we have something for Ms. Eng as well. If I'd like to call up our Middlesex County Teacher of the Year, Ms. Pamela Eng. Take the picture with the board? The board?
Yep.
Good evening, members of the Board, colleagues, and community. I am deeply honored to be named the Middlesex County Teacher of the Year.
Mrs. Anj, get closer to the mic.
Better? Am I good? When I first heard the news, my initial thought wasn't about the award. It was about the incredible students who inspire me every single day, and the amazing team that makes each classroom a place of discovery, growth, and celebration. Every morning, walking into Lincoln School and seeing the students' bright smiles and hearing their cheerful greetings reminds me of how fortunate I am to do this work. Lincoln School has always held a special place in my heart. It's where I completed my student teaching under the guidance of Christine Bennie, who first showed me the power of patience and encouragement, and helped shape the teacher that I am today. Returning here to build my career has been one of the greatest privileges of my life, and I am proud to represent both my school and Edison Township. And along the way, I have been fortunate to be guided by mentors and leaders who have supported me at every step. I'm especially grateful to my principal, Mr. Scully, and my Assistant Principal, Mrs. Mosley-Avias, for their steady leadership and confidence in our work. I want to thank Dr. Alderelli for fostering a school environment where teachers and students alike can truly flourish. But most of all, I am inspired by my students. They bring energy, wonder, and laughter into our classrooms. They remind me why I chose this profession. I love seeing a student's face light up when they finally solve that tricky math problem, hearing the giggles as we read another chapter of our favorite Read Aloud, marveling at their surprising science questions in the garden, and being there to listen to their questions and concerns, small moments that make every day meaningful. This recognition is not mine alone. Teaching is a collective effort, and I am deeply thankful for my colleagues. They have been there on the challenging days, offering encouragement, helping me think through ideas, and cheering me on throughout this process. This honor also reflects the dedication of administrators who lead with purpose, and families and community who invest and champion in our students every day. Everything I do as an educator is possible because of this incredible network of support, dedication, and shared vision, and I am proud to share this recognition with each and every one of them. And finally, I want to thank my parents and my brothers. Their love, encouragement, and unwavering support have given me the confidence and strength to pursue my passion for teaching wholeheartedly. Thank you so much for this incredible honor. It is a privilege to come work here every day, to learn alongside their students, and to help them discover all that they are capable of achieving while inspiring them to believe in themselves. I'm proud to represent the remarkable work happening at Lincoln School and throughout Edison Township, and I am grateful every day for the students, colleagues, and families who make this journey so full of meaning and purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Revnik?
Yes.
Come on now.
Good evening. Matt Revnak, I'm the president of the Edison Township Education Association. So I just want to mention that Ms. Eng is so deserving of this reward. You know, I thought about the commercial in olden, I'm dating myself. When AF Hunter speaks, people listen. When I visit Ms. Eng in her class, when Ms. Eng speaks, her students listen. To get a group of third graders to just sit there, like mesmerize with her, just tells you the quality person and teacher she is. We always brag about the great teachers, and we do have an incredible staff across the district, and Ms. Eng shines above. She was recognized about a week and a half ago at the Middlesex County Union Reception. Now she has the ability to go on, and hopefully she'll be named Teacher of the State. But to stand out among, I believe there's something like forty other school districts in Middlesex County, shows the type of person. And one final thing in finishing up, when I visit Ms. Eng, the first thing she asks me to show what type of person she is, "How can I help you? How can I get more involved?" That was music to my ears, because I'm always looking to get younger people involved. So it's a well-deserved award. I'm glad you are part of our district, and I wish you a continued success in your future. On behalf of myself and the ETA leadership, we'd like to present this to you. You'll be able to open your own flower shop at the end of the night?
We'd just like to ask if the ETA leadership would come out? I know Ms. Daniel wants to get a picture for us as well.
While you guys are taking the picture, I just want to make a quick comment. Ms. Ann and Mr. Fossa, they are the product of Edison Public Education. This is exactly what we are looking, you know, for from our students and our educators. They're coming from the district. Thank you very much. Okay, we have another presentation.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Shi. So one of the great parts about being a superintendent and surrounding yourself with really talented people that work extremely hard is you also get to get the accolades from their hard work as well, and take a lot of credit for it as well. And the reason why I say this is because tonight, we are actually the recipients of an award in Leadership and Innovation Technology Award presented by the CEO of a company that we've worked really, really hard with in relationship to school counseling, telecounseling, and the utilization of AI, and that's Mr. Steve Palm. The individuals that have worked so hard with them are my Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Thomas Tuohy. Round of applause for Tom. And our Supervisor of Special Education, Ms. Kate Gausman, who have been on the forefront of this partnership and have worked really, really hard, not only for the success of our students, but to be on the front edge of the wave of the future in relationship to AI and telecounseling. So at this time, I would love to call up Mr. Steve Palm for a couple of words. Thank you.
Thank you. It's tough to follow. Teacher of Middlesex, so congratulations, Ms. Eng. Good evening, Dr. Alderelli, Board of Education members and guests. On behalf of my colleagues at Prospery...
Can you put the microphone up?
On behalf of my colleagues at Prospery, it's an honor to join you tonight and present Dr. Alderelli and the Edison Township Public Schools with our 2025 Leadership and Innovation in Technology Award. At Prospery, our mission is simple yet vital. We leverage human expertise and artificial intelligence to ensure that every student receives exceptional support, particularly in counseling, and to help each one reach their full potential. Prospery is created by educators and industry leaders like myself, whose goal is not to replace the human touch, but to superpower and dedicated school counselors with technology, AI, designed for real school environments. Last year, Prospery was privileged to partner with Edison Township. Throughout this partnership, we were impressed, my entire team was impressed, by Edison's talent, culture of innovation, and commitment to student success. Our team was particularly impressed with Kate Guzman and Tom Tuohy, two exceptional representatives of the Edison team. Under the leadership of Dr. Alderelli, sorry. Edison has embraced technology, not as a buzzword, but as a practical avenue to improve outcomes. The dedication and openness of your educators helped us pilot and refine our telecounseling services, develop our AI, develop our technology, and set a standard for excellence and collaboration. It's my privilege tonight to present this award, and our appreciation and thanks for the partnership and the passion for innovation that the Edison School District has shown us, and I thank your community. We look forward to continuing this journey with you and together advancing student achievement, particularly in the area of school counseling, which we think is a vital area of development. So thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Palm. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right, so we're going to be, real quick, President Report. I already said a lot about this, so just congratulations to the teachers and, oh, the students are here, and the award winners. When, you know, going back to Ms. Eng, we actually, the ceremony you saw on TV, that happened, I think it was in March or April. And, you know, I'd like to thank all the students as well in the school. There was a great assembly, but at that time, it was supposed to be a secret. Until, I think it was July, they had to announce, because the previous, you know, Teacher of the Year was still Teacher of the Year until July. So all the students kept a secret, and I'd like to thank them as well. So, good job. So that's it for me for today.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Shi. For my Superintendent's Report, a lot of the sentiments that I echoed on Thursday night, I just want to welcome back our staff, students, and parents to the start of another unbelievable school year, 2025-2026. The beginning of school year with our back-to-school nights, opening ceremonies like this, it's our pep rally. There's such excitement that's built in the promise of a wonderful experience in each and every single classroom. I thank everybody that made this possible, my central office team, as well as all of our building-level administration, our teachers, our support staff, our custodian staff that got everything ready up until the finish line, as well as our bus drivers each and every single day. It really takes a village, and we have an unbelievable staff that makes sure that the first couple of days went fantastic. This year also marks year two of the strategic plan, building upon the successes of last year and the areas of growth for this year. We are moving right along with all five of our pillars, finance, wellness, Portrait of a Graduate, programs and pathways, as well as engagement. We are committed to each and every single one of them. And one of the highlights within those areas is part of our expansion plan. If you've noticed, and this is full representation of some of the work that we've done in this gymnasium right here, we had a lot of projects that have gone on over the course of the summer. We have a little video that's going to be representing that in just a moment, but we have our JP Stevens Expansion Project, as well as our auditorium renovation. We just did a great groundbreaking ceremony as a Board of Education over at John Marshall. Our Edison High School vestibule is red as well as the cafeteria renovations are near completion right now. We have fitness courts at both high schools, Edison High School as well as JP Stevens, which should be done mid-October. We are the only high schools in the state of New Jersey to have these fitness courts, and they are open to the community. We encourage everybody to take utilization of these. We'll have a representation of that as well, too. We have paving. We've got a bunch of stuff, but why don't you take a look at it for yourselves, so we can roll the video? Thank you very much. That's just a small sampling of the work that's completed. We've got a bunch of things to come, air conditioning in a few of our elementary schools, a JMI Expansion Project, softball field, and orchestra room over at Edison High School as well. You know, looking at those pieces, as well as the accomplishments over the course of the last year in relationship to our strategic plan, I can't think enough about our North Star Statement, which represents everything that we embody here in Edison Township, empowering learners to shape the world with knowledge, purpose, and passion. I thank this Board of Education for its vision and its support in all of these endeavors, and supporting me and my team for the benefits of all the students here in Edison Township. Mr. Shi, before I conclude, I just do have a quick public service announcement. So one of our goals here is to stay connected, and with our Director of Communications, Ms. Heather Daniel, we have done just that. We have a one-pager in the back that has QR codes that is basically one-stop shopping for everything Edison Township Public Schools. We have the opportunity to download our Parent Square app, which is going to be our branding of communication here in Edison Township, from all of our staff to our school community. We want you to follow us on social media, too. We have a pretty active and robust Instagram presence currently right now, as well as Twitter and Facebook, or X and Facebook. If you're interested or want to know about, you know, internal happenings and see us interview some staff, some students, some Board of Education members, we started a podcast entitled "Leading the Way." It's got some really good information on there, and gives you a little bit of an insight and a different take on Board of Education members, our teachers, our principals. There's a great one with our Teacher of the Year as well, too. And last but not least, there is also a link for interest for our up-and-coming education foundation. So for anybody that's interested in learning more about it, with the potential for an application process as well, too, which will be coming up within the next month or two, please feel free to take a page off of Ms. Daniel there, download the apps, scan the QR codes, and join us in this journey. Mr. Shi, that concludes my Superintendent's Report for this evening.
Thank you very much. So now we're going to take a five-minute break, so the kids can wrap up and go home to their homework, and then we're going to go resume our regular program. Thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to resume. First, we have two representatives from the two high schools. So who wants to go first? No, this time, we'll let Edison High go first. Next time, JP. All right?
Good evening, everyone, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent, administrators, teachers, and the community. My name is Levin Levin, and I am the President of the Student Council of Edison High, and I'm very honored to be here today. Edison High is a school where students take pride in more than just academics, but also school spirit, leadership, giving back to the community, and creativity. The Student Council, along with many other clubs, play a big role in fostering this energy and working hard to make sure events bring people together and create memories for a lifetime. Today, I just want to highlight some of the past events we've done so far and what we have coming up in the next couple of weeks. We began the year in August with our freshman orientation, where we brought together all the freshmen from the two middle schools, and they were welcomed into our school with the Student Council Board, as well as some teachers. They were able to go through their schedules, have a motivational guest speaker, and learn about the school before starting in September. We also, earlier this month, hosted a back-to-school night for Edison High, and it helped introduce the newest Eagles to Edison High life, and as well as their parents, which encouraged them to start off the year strong. Earlier this month, in October, the coming up month, sorry, we'll be hosting a Spirit Week as well, where it will be able for students to show off their spirit with events leading up to the big homecoming dance and homecoming game at the end of October, the first week. And it's a way to showcase the students, to find their ways to get involved. We also have the pep rally as well during that week. We would also like to have, coming up on October, the Halloween event, where we will have a Halloween costume competition, which encourages creativity and brings students together in a spirited way. And this week's homecoming theme is also a night in New York, where we're looking forward to a weekend filled with school spirit, pride, and community. And finally, as of November, we will have our annual volleyball for charity event. This fundraiser is always a highlight for the fall, which combines not only school spirit, but again, giving back to the community for students who are committed for just not our community, but making a difference beyond Edison High. All these events reflect how engaged and spirited the community-minded and community-minded our student body is, and I am proud to share that Edison High continues to be a place where students feel connected, supported, and inspired. I'd also like to say in closing, a special thanks to our advisors, Ms. Fedowitz, Ms. Vanderrein, the Principal, Mr. Ross, Mr. Ferraro, Ms. Lowbeck, who all helped to make sure Edison High is the place where students can feel connected and make all our events possible. And I'd like to say one more time, thank you for this opportunity to speak, and I hope to keep on having updates for upcoming meetings. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So how do you like the new cafeteria?
Yes, I'd like to add the upgrades and renovations are actually very nice. We have new screens, lightings, the entryway in the lobby is much bigger now and spacious, which is really nice. We also have the updated security room for a parent drop-off, and overall, the fitness center now outside is really great and a really new change to the school as well.
How about the trophies box? Is it filled in yet?
Yeah, it looks great, and the mirrors, windows are huge now as well.
All right, thank you very much.
Of course, thank you.
Okay. Now JP Stevens.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anuja Sharma, and I am a senior at John P. Stevens High School and a co-president of the Student Council. The start of the school year has been filled with energy and opportunities for students. We welcomed Class of 2026 with the freshman orientation in late August. At orientation, students were given the opportunity to tour the school, walk their schedules, and talk to upperclassmen, who we call Hawks members, about the transition from middle school to high school. To further help the Class of 2026 acclimatize to their new school, Student Council helped facilitate a freshman carnival along other major clubs like DECA, FCCLA, HOSA, and Odyssey of the Mind. This gave freshmen the opportunity to connect through games, snacks, and activities designed to build community. We also had a back-to-school night on Wednesday, September 10th, which allowed parents to walk their child's schedules and meet all their teachers to better understand the expectations and the guidelines for the new school year. The start of this school year was especially exciting with the opening of our brand-new Sea Wing, an exciting addition to our building. The wing has provided us with additional classroom space and resources that will benefit both students and staff. Extracurricular life is also in full swing. Clubs have began their interest meetings, including organizations such as the Model UN, DECA, and FCCLA, with many more to come. Additionally, the Weekly is published on a weekly basis, allowing students to stay updated on all of school affairs and explore new opportunities such as events, clubs, and fundraisers. To showcase all of our student organizations, we will be hosting our annual club fair in the coming weeks, giving students the chance to explore new passions and get involved in the school community. Athletics are also giving us much to celebrate. Our girls' volleyball team won their first home game, while the girls' soccer team defeated Edison High School for the first time in six years. Boys' soccer also faced off against Edison, and our football team opened their season with a spirited home game featuring the creative country versus country club theme. Looking ahead, we're preparing for two major events this Friday. First, the Fall Pep Rally will take place during school, and we will work to celebrate and highlight all of our athletic teams. Additionally, the Homecoming Dance will take place on Friday as well in the evening, followed by our Homecoming Game on Saturday, where a newly introduced Homecoming Court will be crowned for the first time in six years. Overall, September has been a month of growth, achievement, and excitement at John P. Stevens. From the energy of our classrooms and the success of our teams, to the engagement of our students and clubs in community events, it's clear that the school year is off to a strong start. We are confident that this year will be filled with spirit and memorable experiences, and I want to thank all of you for your time and your continued support of our school and our community. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Unfortunately, you're a senior, your hallway is not in the new wing, right?
It is not.
Yeah. But you use the study hall, the auditorium, right?
Yes.
You like it?
It's very nice, yeah.
Okay. So you've been at school for four years. Now, this year, we moved probably, you know, a third or half the students into the new wing. The passing time in the hallway is getting much, getting better?
Yeah, so anyone who goes to JP knows that our passing could be a lot, it's very squished. But with the Sea Wing, I feel like I actually have room to walk around. People have elbow room for once, and it's amazing. It's actually, it's a great addition to the building, yeah.
Thank you very much. Glad to hear that.
Thank you.
If you guys want to go home to do your homework, to do your college applications, feel free, but if you want to stay, you're welcome to stay as well, okay?
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so let's go through our regular agenda. We are opening up for public comments for resolutions only. Public comments for resolutions. Anyone? Yes, Mrs. Conway. Thank you, guys.
It's a personnel question, that's okay.
Sure.
Elizabeth Conway, 20, Netherwood Circle. As I'm looking through the personnel agenda...
Mrs. Conway, just a little bit low. Thank you.
Start over.
Yep.
Elizabeth Conway, 20, Netherwood Circle. As I'm looking through the agenda of the personnel, I see under Joan Valentine, it's changed to a Director of Innovation. Is there some way you could, was this something that is new? Was it posted, explained, finalized? And actually, the start is TBD.
Okay, any other questions?
Not about the resolutions. I'll come back for the other.
Okay. Dr. already?
Yeah, sure. So yeah, this is actually a position that was spearheaded out of our strategic plan in year one. A position was posted, I believe, in late July or early August, partially grant-funded as well. We utilized some title funding in a little bit of a different way. And it has really kind of spearheaded some of the innovative practices that we've been doing in relationship to our academy work, our North Star statement, Edison 360 in relationship to our Portrait of a Graduate, but most importantly, working with our administrators and teachers on the infusion of artificial intelligence in each and every single day. So yeah, so it was definitely planned for, the TBD, which will be talked about right after the board votes on that in relationship to a transition plan, if the board does accept this recommendation.
Is there an actual posting of this position?
Yeah, it's closed. Yes, it was...
No, but the description...
It was posted and closed. Yep, yep, job description is on our website.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Public comments on resolutions? See none? Motion to close? You have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. So let's see. All right. All in favor?
All right.
Okay. So a little change on the procedure. Now we are opening up to board members. Do you have any questions about the resolutions? Because once I call the approval, we're not going to talk about in the middle of the voting. Do we have any board members have any questions about the resolutions that we're about to approve? Any board members? Okay. See none? All right. Can I have a motion to approve personnel?
Motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Joan, you got it?
We're good.
Okay. Roko, please.
Mr. Eriko.
Yes.
Mr. Ronak Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Lugo.
Yes.
Ms. Anjana Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Ramano.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Peng.
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
President Shi.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All yeses. Congratulations, Dr. Valentine, on this brand-new position. Now you can have the stage and say a couple words. You can decline the position if you want to.
No, definitely not. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm so excited to be here, and as I thought about what I wanted to say tonight, I considered this like I'm receiving my own award. So I want to make sure that I, in the spirit of that, give credit to those who helped me earn it. So I'd like to start by thanking, first and foremost, my family, my mother, my husband, my siblings, who've been the champions and cheerleaders of all the work that I've done throughout my career. I'm so grateful for everything that they've done and how they've stood by my side. Next, I'd like to thank Dr. Alderelli, the Board of Education, and the Central Office Team. Thank you, thank you, thank you for creating this position and for having the trust and faith in me to lead innovation throughout the district. You have met every challenge, every request, every wild idea with the same level of energy and enthusiasm that has helped innovation take flight throughout the district, and I'm extremely grateful for that. It's been said that in order to do great things, you should surround yourself with greatness, and I've been so lucky to do that very thing in my role as the district's chair for the Innovation Committee over the past few years. I've had the privilege and the honor of working with a powerhouse team of educators and leaders, Christina Hughes, Jen Fisher, Kristen Tassoy, Nicole Halpin, Sam Gromaldi, Ogis Ray, Harriet Sedaris. It's been such a pleasure to work with all of them, to have their creativity, their collaboration, their forward-thinking. It's been so much fun, and I can't wait to continue to innovate with one another. And last but certainly not least, and this is a thank you that is near and dear to my heart, I have two jemazing assistant principals, Dan Kelly and Ken Blacheski, along with an extraordinary community of students, teachers, parents, support staff, counselors, custodians, nurses, you name it, administration, everything at John Adams couldn't be any better, and I'm just so proud of the work that we've done together. I'm so grateful for the time that I've spent there. I'm honored to have been the principal there for several years. And the best part about this position is that I don't have to say goodbye. I get to continue forging those relationships with the John Adams community, and I also get to extend my reach to all the other schools throughout the district. I'm super excited. I can't wait to get my hands dirty and innovate with the rest of the community and the rest of the school district. Thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. I really like your energy, and you know, I learned the word jemazing when my kids were in the John Adams. Now what you need to do is make Edison School District amazing. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Shi, just to answer another question from before, you know, Dr. Valentine has big shoes to fill, right?
Yes.
So the TBD on there is in order to, number one, secure a candidate, whether that's an interim, as we look for a permanent candidate for that particular position. But Dr. Valentine is still going to be running the ship over at JAMs as we make sure that we smoothly transition her into the Central Office role.
Thank you.
Mr. Shi.
Yes.
I'd like to, Joanie, I've known you a long time. You did a great job, and you're expected to do even greater things. Thank you for doing what you do for the students of Edison. To be honest with you, you're a tornado. Every time I turn around, well, Joanie said it. Thank you for doing what you're doing. Keep up the good work. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other board members? All right, so we're going to have, can I have a motion to approve Administration, Curriculum, Instruction, and People Special Services? Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion. Second.
Whoever, you give it to Joe first.
Doesn't matter. Long as we get this one done.
All right, Roko, please.
Mr. Eriko.
Yes.
Mr. Ronak Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Lugo.
Yes.
Ms. Anjana Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Ramano.
Absolutely, yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Peng.
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
President Shi.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Can I have a motion to approve finance?
Motion.
I second.
Yes.
Mr. Ronak Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Lugo.
Yes.
Ms. Anjana Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Ramano.
No.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Peng.
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
President Shi.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Committee reports. Finance and facility.
Hello, everyone. There was a finance and facility meeting on September 15th at 4:00 PM in Caucus Room. Attendees were Vishal Patel, Ralph Eriko, Ronak Patel, Jerry Shi, and the district leadership. We discussed the purchase of 430 Talmage. The contract is signed, and we are in the due diligence period for JMI. A pilot division has filed a stay until the 9/23. We were, we discussed some options for EC Phase 2 for project financing. We discussed some contracts for John Marshall, various additions, you know, classroom additions, cabling, security, as well as lighting and rigging. And for facilities, we reviewed Edison High School's orchestral renovation, bids to be received on October 7, and we received Ben Franklin mystery design to submit a proposal for HUEC for the Ben Franklin School. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we are open for public comments.
Curriculum.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. It's not here, I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah, curriculum, curriculum committee reports. We had a curriculum committee on September 30th, 2025. I don't have the attendance. I can't find the attendance. I think attendance is me, Vishal Patel, who else was there? Dr. Rick Cohen, and I can't remember who. Ronak, oh, Ronak Patel was there, too. I can see it. It's okay. I know our CTE supervisor was there, too.
It's on here.
It's weird.
Oh, it doesn't have the attendance.
Maybe it's my fault.
No, it's definitely not, it's definitely not your fault.
It's okay. I know our CTE supervisor was there, too. I just can't remember her name.
Probably Rick Cohen.
Rick Cohen I mentioned.
I mean, Rick Cohen.
Okay.
Got it, Rick Cohen.
Yeah, but we discussed the detail of the business academy, which will launch next school year. This is in addition to our bio academy and a computer science academy that's launched this year. Then we basically had a brainstorming session exploring every idea from the programming names, this is in terms of the career pathways. We talk about the names, the academy, institute, pathways, to levels of studies, and entrance criteria. Our vision is twofold, breadth by offering a wide range of subject area for students to explore, and depth by providing multiple levels within each subject. We also want to provide flexibility so students can adjust, switch levels, or change directions along the way, because we all know teenagers change their minds very frequently. Our goal is simple. Every student, whether college-bound or not, should find something in high school that sparks their interest, develop their skills, and give them career options and build their confidence. High school is, you know, supposed to be fun, not, much more fun and less stress. We also talked briefly about middle school win period. The committee received a brief updates on the current win period situation, and we discussed potential enhancement. More details will be shared soon. Stay tuned. Meeting was adjourned about 5:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, it was not on the printed thing. All right, now we are open for public comments for anything. So anyone, public comments? Yes, Mr. Conway.
On Saturday evening, I went to JP Stevens High School. They had the marching band competition, and it was beyond fabulous. The kudos to both bands was phenomenal, and I just thought they deserved to hear from somebody that it was that wonderful. Secondly, regarding the Talmage property, I was at the ETEA Candidates Night last night, and it was brought up, and we heard many different things going on regarding the property. But I was told, someone said anyway, that a contract has not been signed yet for the purchase of the land. Is that accurate? And number two is, I was kind of upset why you would spend $9 million just to stop developers from building apartments. We can think it, but to make, announce it in public sounded a little off to me. But to hear some positive items, how we would spend $9 million for a piece of property and put it to good use for our school district is a great idea. This has been going on for a number of years. In fact, when I was on the board many years ago, that was a topic of discussion, and there was a few choices back then. So I'd like to see it move forward, but I would also like to hear something more definitive as to what's going on with that chunk of money and more definitive ideas. It doesn't have to be anything solidified yet, but in what direction. Thank you.
Okay. So you want to try to address that?
So in relationship to the contract, it's still currently with the attorneys, so there's not too much that we can probably disclose in relationship to this, but if you've ever been involved in a house sale and things along those lines, there's a process of due diligence where you, you know, inspect the property, I mean, in relationship to that. Mr. Toth, I don't know if you want to...
Yeah, that's accurate. There's a variety of things when it comes to, you know, purchasing or acquisition of land, wiring, oh, sorry. When you're acquiring land with public funds for public use, you have to go through a variety of different tests, Phase 1 environmental tests, or what you might call a preliminary. There's site surveys that got to get done. There's a whole bunch of things that need to get done in order of due diligence, in order to be able to complete the transaction and get you to closing, along with, you know, approval for land acquisition by the New Jersey Department of Education. So we're currently going through that process now. That's all I can really say as to comment to that. Thanks, sir.
Yeah, and in relationship to the property's use and the potential for the district to utilize that property, it's much like when the board purchased the church across the street at Menlo Park, right? I remember when I first came to Edison Township, we were in the process of negotiating that. There were ideas for a preschool, there were ideas to build an extension across and make it one complex in relationship to Menlo Park, and then we kind of landed on the Edison Success Academy at that time, too, which provides the alternate school for our high school students. We're in a very similar situation. We've had, I mean, we've had ideas tossed around in relationship to a school, a bus depot. I mean, the good part about this property, it's equidistant from both ends of town. So there's a lot of potential in relationship to that. What we're going to rely upon at Edison Administration with Board of Education's support is not only our strategic plan, but our long-range facilities plan, too, which guides our process with those components. And, you know, the minute that this does come to fruition, we will present the Board of Education with some concrete options.
Thank you. So, Mrs. Conway, I think you were on a board when we actually started this, and we actually had DMR to design this. We went to DMR, the office, they presented their design to us in their office when Ralph was the president, and we also visited one of their schools as the caucus on the other side of the train station. Very amazing, right? So this thing has been going on for a while, and I don't know if you remember the discussion of the point is, you know, the cost of building a 500-student school or 750-student school, it's very high. And the, at the end of the day, when we looked at it, you know, there were discussions about 500 students, I think it was 60-something million dollars at a point. You know, there were, there were discussions about five hundred school, five hundred students, I think it was sixty something million dollars at a point. And for seven fifty, it was a five story building with, with about eighty-two or eighty-three million dollars. And that was the money at that time. Just think about how much it is. This is not, not including the, the land purchase, which is another, you know, that time was nine and a half million dollars. So when we looked at this, is the, the number why five hundred, seven, or seven fifty is because we go by the demographic study, right? J P Stevens was four hundred students over capacity and Edison High was one hundred and fifty. So we tried to see if we can build a school that will take these overcrowding out of these schools. But the problem with that is it's a big investment. And if we do a magnet school, which we take the, the top of the students from both high schools. It, it's not gonna, yeah, it will make this school look good, but the ratings of the other schools will drop. And also the problem of that, if you actually look at the design, there was no space for sports. It's very limited, a small playground area. So the students will still go back to their high schools to do extracurriculum for sports and stuff like that. And so that's one consideration. The other consideration was vocational school, right? But the problem is that, that we wasn't sure if we can attract four hundred students out of J P. To go there to go vocational school. And the other problem with that is when students graduate from the school, they still don't have a professional license. And so because of challenges of that, so high school was not considered. There's other options we considered, elementary school. A kindergarten school, central district wise or pre K, whatever you wanna call it. And also a middle school. But the problem of that is you only solve problem at one level, right? If you do a middle school, you only solve the problem at, at the middle school. You, if you do elementary or, you know, that's only for the elementary, elementary schools for overcrowding. But we spent all our money, we're not addressing the entire school district. That's why later on, we developed a three-stage, developed a three-stage plan to address all the different schools. And that's part of the long range facility plan. So that's why we decided not to pursue with schools in that property at that point. And right now we are following this three-stage, you know, expansion plan. We have seventy classrooms that's, that's coming, that's already completed or in the process of being built. And we'll continue to expand based on that plan. So we'll, we'll, we'll see more classrooms and the, my whole goal is to put air conditioning in every classroom. And so that, that is the story and that's a fact. So I guess it's election season and people's memory, you know, get faded. But, you know, I'm not saying you, I'm not saying you. So, you know, but that's what it is. And this, this is public. I'm saying public. People can, you know, record or cut my video. So any other public comments? Yes, sir.
Hi.
Hello.
Yeah, I'm Umresh from ninety-two Kingswood Court, Edison, New Jersey. I'm here to talk about meditation and how it impacts kids. So I want to discuss some things like in today's fast-paced world, right?
Can you, can you move the microphone down a little bit? There you go.
In today's fast-paced world, kids undergo a lot of stress, anxiety. And research has proven that if kids do regular meditation, these could be high school kid, middle school kids, even as early as elementary kids. They get into the habit of that. It helps them with mindfulness, helps reduce stress, anxiety. And just helps them deal with the academics better. So I have two parts to my question. The first question is, has the education board looked at this in the past? And the second thing is, there is a mental health awareness day that's coming up on October the tenth across the world. And this is celebrated across the world where a lot of teaching around mental health is done. So in, I am part of an organization that, it's a nonprofit organization called as Himalayan Samarpur Meditation. And we offer meditation to the public. And in honor of the October tenth day, we are having a, a session at Roosevelt Park. From nine to eleven, where we will be having yoga plus meditation sessions for kids, for adults, families, staff. So the second question that I have is, is there a way for us to help promote this so that the Board of Education or anybody else can help us? To ensure that we get people who are looking for these things? Thank you.
Mr. Shi, can I say something?
Yes.
I know Vishal and I were just discussing this at Lent in our last meeting at the education center. So I know Vishal is very interested and, and actually wants to find a way to do something for our students and staff regarding mental health. So I think Vishal would be a perfect candidate here to like head this up.
I mean, I mean, I, I plan to attend this event and I would, if it's, you know, allowed, I can invite everybody, right? The intra-district and teachers to attend the event and then, you know, expose themselves to, you know, experience the meditation. Is that allowed?
Yeah, I, I mean, everybody's welcome. Like, I have a flyer. I just don't know whom to shout to that.
Okay.
Mr. Shi will let you know.
Yeah. So to answer your question, have we considered? Absolutely, yes. Okay? So, you know, mental health is very important. It's, it's ultimately, you know, it's, it's extremely important, you know, for our students. So we'll do whatever we can, if it's possible, to, to help these students. Dr. Reddy, you wanna say anything or?
No, I mean, those components are something near and dear to our chief academic officer for secondary, Mr. Cohen. In relationship to student and staff, mental health and wellness, along with Dr. Tuie, Tuie and Ms. Gausman. Who also spearhead those components of our strategic plan pillar in relationship to that. So the answer to that is yes. We look at ways to embed that during physical, physical education class. We talk about those components in elementary school during our morning meeting. As far as the specific endorsement, I don't know if the Board of Education can officially do it, but I think he did a pretty good job talking in the microphone right now. And this is going to be broadcasted, so I'm pretty confident that there's gonna be major awareness of it right now. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other? Yes.
The only concern I have, the teaching aspect of it's great. They do, the persons who are doing this. Do they have to be certified? Or do they have to have certain training? Before they can take and deal with our students? Have to, do they have to be insured? All I, you know, I, I think it's a great idea. But I wanna make sure that we do our due diligence before we say yes. Let's say yes, but we do our due diligence first. I think it's a great idea, sir. I think it's a great idea. Fact of the matter is, I wanna make sure that the board makes sure that there's due diligence. That's my only concern.
Thank you. The, the key word is due diligence, right? We gotta do our due diligence, anything that we do. So the answer is yes. And they probably had to go through background check as well, just like, you know, anyone who deal with students. So the short answer is yes, and we will do due diligence. Not only this, we'll do due diligence on a lot of other things as well. That's what, you know, when we try to bring anything into school program, we need to do that. Thank you very much. Okay? Yeah, Joyce.
Joyce Shep Freeman, Edison, New Jersey. I've seen the meditation before and I've seen it work before in the Irving setting where the kids were really wired. And they presented meditation in the room to them and it calmed their nerves and it calmed them down a whole lot. So I'm, I'm always for that information. Now, something I'm not that crazy about, but I don't know, everybody seems to be crazy about it lately, this A I. I've even used some A I and got the wrong answers constantly. And to me, I, I think we lack most the ability, the critical reading skills. I think it's lacked, you know, even among adults, they just look at stuff. They don't actually read it. They don't process it. They don't comprehend it. They just jump. And that's why everybody's like, you know, fighting and scrambling with each other. So I'm strong, I'm strong for that. If you're gonna do the A I, whatever, over here, learning over here. You know, that can just be an extra tool because I think that when different papers and different information is used. You may use a little bit of A I, but you need to give them like three different things to use in order to come up with the right paper. You know, media, paperwork and other, other magazines and different things that you can get online. But, you know, I really, I really don't like that a lot and especially with young children. And I, people know that I've seen people walk out to dinner, which I was very, very proud of this particular lady that was at dinner with her child. When the child got antsy, instead of doing like most people do, give them the phone, give them information, she gave the kid a book. While they were sitting there. And I think we need to do more of that, of getting the children more involved in reading. Because reading builds vocabulary and they will know, when they look at the A I, they'll know that, oh, no, this information is not correct. Because I know I read it and heard it another way. And I'd like to say kudos to the teacher of the year from Edison. That she made it far as Millsdale County and I'm hoping that she makes it through the state. Because I work a lot with the other teacher that made it through the state. I go to workshops and stuff with her during the course of the summer. So that's really good. Because I remember when I, I substituted Lincoln School like two hundred, a hundred years ago. And I'm like, that school was kinda, and I'll tell you, because I know about schools, districts. That being a third grade teacher is very hard. People on the street, they don't understand. They think elementary is so easy because they don't understand what you have to put into it. They don't understand when you build the house, you gotta do the basement first. You gotta get a good, strong foundation. Else they won't be able to get to the next level. So I'm glad that Edison, that we're continuing to keep our schools great. And this is like super gorgeous. This is, this is beautiful. And a secret is when I was going to John Adams, the regular Wood, Woodrow Wilson was being built and I was at split sessions. So this is even better than it was when it was brand new. I'm very, very happy with the way the money is being spent in Edison. I'm glad that you're not jacking up my taxes all over the place like other people are. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Zero percent, right? Zero percent tax increase. All of this, zero percent tax increase. Yeah, I, I, I thanked you privately before, but I wanna thank you publicly. Thank you for connecting us with Mr. Dillon on the U S T A. I, I didn't know you were, you're a good tennis player until he told me. So Dr. Huss is working with him to see what the, you know, he can help us. But I want to thank you in public for introducing him to our school district. Really appreciate it. Any other public comments?
Motion to close before Mr. Ross gets up. I thought Mr. Ross was trying to get up.
Yeah, I was just kidding.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Good evening to the Board of Education here. My name is Priyank Goyal. I live on Fairmount Avenue behind J M's. With my two kids, my family. I have one kid who is going to J M's. And the other kid goes to J M P. He's seven years old. He takes his bus from Norton Street and. The background here is that it's pretty inconvenient for him to kind of go to four blocks, which is kind of away from us. And he takes his bus and it becomes more challenging during fall and winter time. My kid is always excited to go to school, but since last year, since this routine has been changed. Because the bus earlier used to come at Fairmount, the intersection of Fairmount and Mount Pleasant. And now it goes a little bit further down, which is four blocks away, to Norton Street. And, and, but he was, he was not excited now. He was like, he, he doesn't want to like. Especially during winter time and this we have seen it last year, especially during winter time, he just don't want to walk that whole four blocks. And this has already, already been faced by many parents who were there earlier, but they have to leave unfortunately. But so, so my request to the Transportation Department through Board of Education here that. And, and that bus actually passes through that now, Mount Pleasant and Fairmount. The bus actually passes from there. So my request here is to make the same spot for the kids to board the bus. There are five or six kids who wants to board the bus from that Fairmount and Mount Pleasant and the bus actually passes from there. So this is, I'm not asking to get to a, a new bus stop. But I'm just asking the bus to stop over there at Fairmount and the intersection of Mount Pleasant, which was there earlier. Which can be very convenient for the kids, especially for the small ones. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So where does the bus go after the North Avenue or North Street? Where does the bus go? The North is the last street. I, I live around there area. I'm very familiar with that area.
So after Norton, it goes to the, that circle, the Lucille Court.
Okay.
Yeah, so that doesn't, so earlier the bus used to stop at.
This is elementary school?
Yes, yes.
There's another bus stop near the library. Mount, you know, Mount Pleasant and, you know, the library place. Is that closer to you?
No, that's still far because that's, that's the intersection of, I'm talking about Mount Pleasant and the Fairmount. I think you're talking again, four blocks down the line.
All right, thank you. Just wanna clarify.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, absolutely.
We'll, we'll look into it. What you want to do is why don't you send an email to the Transportation Department and, and, and we'll try to address that.
And what, and what's the bus number? Do you know the bus number?
M D four. M D four. Yeah.
I, I, I'm pretty sure that a couple of years ago, we adjusted the bus stop because there were no kids. The bus used to stop at Lombardi and Fairmount. There were no kids from Lombardi anymore, so that's why it was, it was just.
No, no, the bus, so I, I don't know about Lombardi, but I don't know about the Fairmount and Mount Pleasant, so yeah, there were.
I, I live around there.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah, thank you so much. Thank you. I'm sorry, the last one. So where I should be emailing them, the Board of Transportation?
Send it to Transportation Department.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, the information's right on our website under the Transportation Department.
Thank you so much.
You got it. Thank you.
Mr. Ross. What's great about Edison?
Oh, man, we, we only got six minutes. We don't have enough time.
I'll, I'll give you more time. Every time you talk about this thing about Edison, I'll give you more time. I told you. You're special.
I've got people sitting there waiting and, you know, everybody, it, it being special is being a part of Edison. I just wanted to jump in a bunch of different things. I was great to see our new student representatives. We had so much fun with the ones last year. To see the new young people come out and do so well was, was a great start. And the start of the school year has really done well and the kids really are appreciating all of the different changes that are going on in the school. And a lot of the alumni that come back and they see what the school looks like. It's different, but they're like, wow, this really worked. This really, so it was, it was fantastic. And I'm so happy to hear that the orchestra bids are coming back at the middle of next week. So that, that we'll have that hopefully by the time we're in October, I'll get the Edison hard hats out and we'll get some shovels. We'll start putting a little digging work in, so we'll get that stuff going. So looking forward to that. And again, as our band director said, grateful for the support of the arts. Just wanted to talk about real quick, one of the things that we got going on next week at Edison High, I always talk about the four Rs of Eagle Pride. I beat it into the kids over and over again. It's respect, readiness, responsibility, and the red and the gold. And next week is gonna be the week of respect. And the way that we do that at Edison High, we really started to pick it up. A lot of times people thought week of respect is like a little, a little kid elementary thing. But we do it well in the high school with our RISE students. We sit there and appreciate our diversity. So each of the different days, they're gonna have different activities, bringing different groups of students together. And different ways of demonstrating respect for each other, respect for the school, and respect for our school community. This RISE Leadership Group is a group that's come together under the direction of our teacher champions and Dr. Patel at a central office. Last year, the leadership went on so many different conferences and even held conferences. They saw the grandson of Mandela. They saw the New Jersey Teacher of the Year discuss Holocaust education with them. And they did a switch it up day where they had students from all the different levels in, in the classes go to different classes. So they could see what the experience was like, so they could really bring our school together. One of the things that we always talk about, the last one, after respect comes down to red and gold. And we talk about how they end, that together, it's the thing that puts the two colors together that makes us so strong. And this group has really been a part of that and we're looking forward to the week of respect. I can't wait to see that. And I was also hearing Joyce always talking about J P Stevens. And I believe Ms. Podolsky talked about the great band shows that went week to week over the last two weekends. And I believe Ms. Podolsky talked about the great band shows that went week to week over the last two weekends. And it was kinda, Edison High came away from the JP um band show. JP only performs an exhibition for their own show, but we came away with the most outstanding band, most outstanding music, and most outstanding performance. So it again, shows dedication of all the different work that's been going on in the arts in Edison High. And um let's just keep up this great momentum this school year. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other, any other public comments? Yes, in the back? Joyce, come on. We are one Edison.
Hello, my name is Lydia and I'm a constituent in Edison. I had some questions regarding the closure of three classrooms for preschoolers with disabilities at FDR Preschool. From my understanding, these children from these classrooms will be moved from a one to twelve teach, teacher-student ratio to a one to sixteen student-teacher ratio, integrated classes. I understand that there will still be one to twelve um ratio classes for those who need them as determined by their IEP. And there will, and the one to sixteen ratio classes um that are integrated will also be for those as it's determined by their um IEP. I just wanted to ask whether this decision was made due to the current class's needs or due to space or budget cuts. I have a husband who works with preschoolers with disabilities out of a district who couldn't be here today due to healing from a back injury. He was concerned about this as well. As he said, it's very important that children with disabilities get their needs met, especially at the preschool age as it's the foundation of their learning and behavioral development. Some students have very high needs in terms of how much external stimulation they can handle and um also how much adult support they need, um both behaviorally and to um pay attention in class. And I also think about um different learning styles that's um some students with disabilities. Like they may need a different like learning style as well. So I just wanted to ask about that as that was um, you know, something we were uh concerned about.
Do you have any other questions?
I think, I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So uh before I ask Dr. Alderelli to answer your questions about specific classrooms, there were no budget cut. The budget this year actually went up ten million dollars than before. Okay, so there's no budget cut. The budget went up. The tax stayed uh same, but the budget went up ten million dollars. With that said, Dr. Alderelli?
Yeah, uh just to echo Mr. Shi's sentiments, yeah, in relationship to um uh class size and things along those lines, wasn't due to space or budget cut uh restraints. Not knowing the specifics of the types of students that are particularly in that classroom, our Assistant Superintendent Dr. Tui of Special Services is here. That could probably answer those questions uh in a little bit more detail than I can.
If you don't mind, you can go talk to him. Is he in your corner? Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? Yeah, Matt.
Matt Revnack, ETA President. I know as mentioned before, we did have our ETA candidates like last night. And basically should be a role model for the way election and camp, not campaigning, but a forum like that should be held. I gotta say, the seven candidates that were there was highly respectful to each other, very cordial. And I really do thank those of, you know, the seven members that were there. Anyone that wants to view it that did not get to see it last night or see it in person, it's still, you can go through our ETA website, edisoneta.org. It is there. You can watch it at your leisure. Uh, second thing, um I mentioned that at the caucus meeting, October nineteenth is our trunk or treat. We're gonna save a tree this year and instead of sending flyers out, I already talked to Ms. Daniel, thank you Ms. Daniel, and about sending it out to the middle school and elementary school parents via the, through the district forum. And also she'll post it on the, their district website, the newsletter you send out, et cetera. So we're trying to do things so that the parents do get them because we know sometimes the kids get them and throw them out. This way, you know, all that information is there. And by the way, we do invite all the board members, administration, all, to also attend. Uh, finally, um October is a number of things that need to be recognized here in education. So first of all, it's National Principals Month. So thank you to our principals, the job that they do in running our buildings. I know I personally appreciate the working relationship I have and my building reps have with the principals. So, you know, we want to recognize and honor them. October twenty-third to twenty-seventh is actually School Board's recognition week. So we recognize you, School Board members. Again, thank you for the service you provide for that great, you know, salary of zero that you get. You know, sometimes we disagree, but I do appreciate you giving up your time and, you know, commitment to the district. October second is National Custodians Day. I know as mentioned before about the great job they did preparing our schools, but thank you to our custodians and uh keeping our schools clean and maintained well. October fifth, although we celebrated in in uh May, uh National Teachers Week, but it's World Teachers Day on October fifth. So universally speaking, teachers are recognized on that day. And there's two other things that happened in the month of October. It's also National Bullying Prevention Month. And based on the climate in our country right now, I don't think there's a better time to have National Bullying Prevention Month. I hope people around the country will adhere to that and, you know, take a little cooling off period and a timeout. And specifically in New Jersey, it's Week of Respect, uh starting next Monday through Friday. I know I always taught some, a couple of lessons when I taught, even though I was a math teacher, about respect and, you know, honoring other people's opinions, et cetera. So again, in our current climate, hopefully, um, you know, the message will get out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Motion to close?
Oh. You're too slow.
Harish Thatineni, forty-five McKinley Street. As always, a few small, small questions. So John, first one, I'll give it to you since you were very excited to close the meeting as soon as I was about to speak. So Stop Finder, uh one month since the schools have been open. I think it's time we release that, upload the routes and send the email to different parents, the new parents. I know those who were already there on that app earlier, for them it's working. But for the new parents, uh when I called, they said they would send an email and all, but so far I haven't received. Most of us haven't received it. That being said, yes, as I always said, when there are issues, we complain. When things are going well, we should recognize in public. So this year, Transportation did a great job. I have to accept that. Uh, most of the issues were resolved with the help of either a telephone call or a help desk ticket and it was done uh within a week, as opposed to one month plus last year or the year before. So yes, I think finally it is streamlined and hopefully it will be like that uh in future years. Number second, so Dr. Alderelli, a couple of months back, I thought you said that requisition for one fifty fans was placed. Would be great if you could give some update.
What is it? I'm sorry?
Huh?
What is it?
Fans. One fifty fans, the requisition was placed. I believe you said it two months or three months back. So just curious, what is the latest uh status update? I know the future is AC and that's what we want, but till such time. This is a hot topic every summer. So what stage is it in? Still in the process of being acquired or fixed or working, whatever it is? One, two, three. Soccer fields, uh so I, I, I know the cricket fields were being managed by the Edison Recreation Department. Just curious if the soccer fields are different or it is the same one? Some issues and complaints on social media from parents about that, so any information would be helpful, who manages it and uh what is the process of permits and timings and all that? Fourth, JPS and EHS halls, uh the auditoriums, great work, Jerry and team in terms of the expansions and all. So when the locals, Edison residents and/or nonprofit organizations from Edison Township rent it, is there a fifty percent discount like it is there in some other townships, for example Monroe? If not, is there any such plan to bring about such uh policy changes? Next one, the fitness courts in EHS and the tennis courts in JPS. So after hours, I believe it is open to public, but in the absence of any rules, that would be a chaos. So we need to have some rules, like uh first come, first served basis. If, if it is singles, then maybe half an hour, doubles, one hour, like we have in, like say Merrill Park. Next, um, okay, this is that sensitive topic which was already discussed, I believe, by Board President with Superintendent and Attorney about some objectionable content in some books and some school libraries. I'm not an expert in terms of First Amendment and all those things. So I think uh any update after discussing with the Legal Department would be appreciated because parents are really upset about this. I mean, we all know by the time uh students are in high school, they graduated from sophomore class. They know everything, but keeping those things in middle school and that too in open kind of gives the wrong signal. It gives that we are promoting and encouraging that. Next is again, Jerry and team, great job with the school expansions and all that. So that was the best thing we could do in the absence of huge funds wherein a new school could be constructed. But now a small uh difficulty is the class passing time for the students in middle schools and high schools. So how difficult is it to get rid of the win period and the study hall in high school? Win period in middle school and study hall in high school and adjust that time to the class passing time of three minutes, maybe increase it to five minutes or seven minutes. That would be very helpful. For that matter, can that time be adjusted for increasing the parent-teacher conference slots, which is always a fight in middle school and high schools? The joke is that you need to have a high-speed uh internet like the Goldman Sachs traders have to get the parent-teacher conference lot. Okay, running out of time, so the nature ratings. I'm surprised to see that South Brunswick, East Brunswick, and even Mathatchen High Schools are there, but not JPS. Uh, we discussed this a couple of years back. This is related to the feedback of the alumni and the students. I know Dr. Alderelli mentioned we have taken, we have reached out and trying to post content on our website so that they can get it. I think we need to follow up on that because JPS not being in there is kind of a surprise to me. Thank you.
Well, that's a lot of questions. And uh, so um, I, I do appreciate you came here and praised our, you know, Transportation Department. As I said last week, they did do a good job this year, a better job this year than before. And we also have some, you know, things we probably look into, right? But overall, uh, Mr. Gillian and his team, I did a great job. As far as a, a lot of the, the uh detailed questions, I, I think uh it's probably better off you, you sent all of that to uh Dr. Alderelli. And so we can address the one by one. Uh, you wanna address a couple of them?
I mean, the couple, I mean, I wrote a bunch of them down. So I mean, if you, if you could just email, I mean, it was a, a good, a good amount of questions. So I'd like to take some thought in, in relationship to responding to them. One I can answer, a couple I can answer off the top of my head. We bought like four hundred fans somewhere in that ballpark, about that, right? Yeah, yeah. So we're filling orders. Those have already been distributed to building uh principals and classrooms that have requested them. Um, and we'll do that periodically throughout the year. Thankfully, we got winter weather coming up. It's getting a little bit cooler, um, so we can prepare for spring and summertime. In relationship to the Stop Finder app, I believe that's going out. They had to make sure that all the bus stops were correct. Number one's here, right. We had to make sure all the bus stops were correct and accurate as we uploaded them into, because some of them were changing as they do kind of in the beginning of the year. But to my knowledge, I think Dr. Huss had indicated that it's, it's going out tomorrow. Is that correct? Correspondence in relationship to Stop Finder is going out tomorrow. Um, and the other questions, listen, shoot, shoot me an email, um, so I could sit down and take a look at uh those in a little bit uh more detail, especially the ones about scheduling. Uh, we've got a lot of balls in the air for middle and high school scheduling currently right now as we're looking um and analyzing both of our schedules.
Yeah, so just one, you know, one comment is, it's about study hall and the win period. We, we have to have the, you know, mentality that the students, when they're in school, not every minute they need to be sitting in the classroom. And they need a little break here and there. So, you know, I, I, I got your point about the, you know, you need a little bit of passing time. You're looking at win period and, and study halls, but sometimes they just need a little break. And uh, you know, with especially, you know, the gentleman mentioned all the mental health and all the issues. They have a little break time. It's, it's not a really a bad thing. Constantly, you know, seven hours in, 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 in a school and every minute it's, it's, it's getting knowledge fit, you know, taught. I'm not sure if that's really a, a nice, a good model, but we're looking into it. And um, you know, uh to, as far as soccer field and cricket field, they're different. They're gonna manage differently. Tennis courts, we are looking into possibly opening that up. And class passing time, we're, we're looking into it. So just make sure that you send all the questions so we don't miss anyone. But uh, we'll, we'll definitely get back to you. Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Now you can go.
Motion to close?
I'm like, sure, Ralph, really? Okay, second.
Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Alright, now we're open for board member comments. Board members?
Yes, Mr. Shi. Couple of quick things. One, I did attend, uh did attend a few activities in the month of September and actually the end of August, I believe. I was at Mr. Ross's freshman orientation, which was run very well and welcomed all the freshmen in. He had a tremendous uh outpouring of support from his staff and students, so that was a great event. Uh, I did attend both the JP Stevens and the Edison High School Band Competition, two great performances. Edison actually did very well at the JP Stevens Band Festival. And uh I heard that JP is also doing well in their competitions. Uh, I also tend, attended a JP Stevens Edison High School soccer game where Mrs. Pang's daughter just scored so many goals, uh so it wasn't even close. So JP Stevens beat Edison in that match. But again, I enjoy getting out to the uh games and competitions and things like that, so I look forward to more. I love Mr. Ross's email. Every week I get that, uh telling us what's happening in Edison High in October. I try to look on the JP Stevens site for that same information and attend some of their functions as well. Thank you, Mr. Shi.
Hey, Judy?
Okay, I just would like to add my congratulations to uh Ms. Pang for her award and to Dr. Tui and Kate and Dr. Lee for that beautiful, beautiful award that they, they were presented tonight. And then I would also like to add my congratulations to Dr. Valentine. I spoke to her before and I've watched Joni just rise through the ranks from when she was just, you know, a new teacher. And, and you know, it's just so wonderful to see her move forward in this good, you know, in this way. And I know she's gonna be a blessing for all of us. And you're right, she is a tornado. So just hang on, you know, and she's gonna do wonderful things. I know it. I also went to uh the band competitions. I went to Edison High's. And I also went to JP Stevens and they were magnificent. And for JP, I have to say this, the rain held off this year till the very last second when we were just giving out awards because usually we get soaked at JP Stevens. But this year we did not, so the gods were with us. So, uh, but that's it for me and thank you for listening.
Mr. Shi? Well, I'm, I'm excited about appointment of a new Innovation Director. It's a, it's a one step closer towards my goal of integrating AI in district. And, and my vision is to, you know, work with our students. And my vision is to, you know, work with our students and create some AI apps that can be leveraged by district leadership, by our staff and teachers, to make their day-to-day life easy. I know they do a lot of work manually, and it's tedious. And I think our students are capable enough to create some apps to make their day-to-day life easy and also get some exposure of creating real-world application. In the process, we may be able to create some IP that we can sell toward the school district. Dr. Alderelli, thank you.
Jerry? Ladies first. Okay. I just wanted to say that I forgot the name of our CTE supervisor that attended the curriculum meeting, and thank Rick for confirming that it's Ms. Nicole Halping, Dr. Nicole Halping, I think now. That's the name. And I also want to say thank you, Ralph, for mentioning the soccer game. I feel it's a little hard for me to brag myself, but thank you for mentioning that and making my, you know, soccer mom very happy. That's where I spend most of my time, to watch every game of J.P.'s varsity soccer girls' team games. And also, congratulations to Ms. and to Joni Valentine. I think that's a great promotion that we're having, and looking forward to work with Joni on all those great innovations, including the AI, which, you know, I'm very passionate about too. Thank you.
I was at the Edison Band. They did a great job at J.P. Stevens, and J.P. Stevens did a great job at Edison High. Some of the things that I noticed. Edison High, they finished the asphalt work around the track. The outdoor fitness center, that's a plus. I think we have it at Edison High and at J.P. Stevens. That was really, I was excited to see that. One thing that I think we can address. At J.P. Stevens, there's a piece of fencing that's missing. And during the motions, they put caution tape up. Was that, you know, like, not thought about? Or when they took the fence down, they didn't put another fence up? Got to talk to Will Calabas about that?
He's on it.
Thank you, Will. And once again, Dr. Valentine, boy, that's a home run for us. Thank you.
When I was able to be part of that J.P. Stevens Band, it was a great event. Our student did, like, really good hard work and their talent, and their commitment towards the art was very nice. And I witnessed that very closely, and it was good, yeah. All the students participating from all the New Jersey schools performed really good.
Thank you. All right, so I have to echo the comments from, you know, my fellow board members about the band. I was a band parent for seven years, and you think that they sounded pretty good right now? Just wait till the end of the season, okay? They'll be a totally different band, the way the song goes. And as I said, you know, in our school this year, we're not only developing scholars, we're also developing musicians and other, you know, for other curriculum advancements. And Matt, I have to thank the ETA for hosting the event. I was in yesterday. That's great, and everyone did a good job. This afternoon, we had a groundbreaking at Joe Marshall. A lot of work already has been done. We actually saw a couple pictures on the video. The school had probably 36 and 34 classrooms right now, and we're adding 30 more. So we're double the capacity of the school. So this is what you do to solve overcrowding, is by creating classrooms. So we'll continue to do that, and, you know, we hope that JMI is going to take off pretty soon. We can't wait for that. It's been delayed for a year and a half now. And, you know, I don't know why, but I know why right now, but I didn't know why before. So I want to get rid of those trailers behind. You all know that those trailers have been there for a long time. You know, Mrs. Conway, Mrs. Podolsky, you can agree with me. The floors are rotten, so I can't wait for the new classroom to be in there and we get rid of those trailers. And that's it from me. Any other board members, if you see none? Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn. Got you, Ralph.
Who's first, who's second?
It's tough. Close call.
Close call. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting is adjourned.